Good evening and welcome to the East Hampton City Council Meeting of Wednesday, May 4th, 2016. Can we begin with a roll call, please?
Dan Carey.
Present.
Peg Coniff.
Here.
Salem Derby.
Present.
Jennifer Hayes. J.P. Kuzinski.
Here.
Joe McCoy. Dan Rist.
Here.
Tamara Smith.
Here.
And Joy Winnie.
Here.
Thank you. Can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so tonight, we actually do not have any minutes to approve. The April 20th minutes will be approved at our next meeting. So, at this time, we have public speak time where you can address the council on any matters that are not in the public hearing. Do not see anybody from the public wanting to speak. So, we will move on to communications from elected officials, boards, and committees. We only have one item here this evening, which is a recommendation from the planning board regarding the zoning change of 130 Cottage Street, which we have a public hearing on tonight. And we don't have any other correspondence, so Mayor Communications, Ann Kadrig.
Good evening. So, as you can see, the budget is complete, and we're very, very happy that it's complete because the process starts in January with getting in all the budget requests and meeting individually. We meet with every single department to go over their budget. And I think for the first time in many, many years, it almost feels, it's very positive. It's like we see a little bit of light. So, the fact that in many years, we're actually starting to put back some of our critically needed staff. It is definitely the first time in many, many years that, and Counselor Carey can also, being on the Finance School Committee member last year, this is the first time that I can remember that we've actually been able to honor their exact request. And the impact of that is, to me, just thrilling. So, I think, and also our critical staff levels in Police and Fire and DPW. So, it's, by working together, this is year three, this is my third budget, by working together with all of these departments, it just, it is the exact example of what happens when everybody works together for one common thing, which is the best thing for our community. So, I think Counselor Rist is going to, we've agreed on some dates, so he'll go over those later on where, you know, Finance Subcommittee will go over each section of the budget. So, I'm sure he'll give you those dates when we get that far. And also, it's just for your, just for your information purposes, we had talked earlier about that intersection at where College Highway is South Street and Route 10, which is College Highway. And there's just a copy of the letter in there, which starts the process. Whether it's, whether we would be eligible or not doesn't really matter at this point. It's important to get the request out there. So, that's what that is. Okay? And if you have any questions, I'm here.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. So, let's move on to reports from standing committees. Finance, Counselor Rist.
Thank you. As I do want to announce the budget hearings, I do want to congratulate the mayor on this budget and the Finance Director and all the department heads and the Superintendent of Schools and the Board of, the School Board. It's been eight years, I think, since we've had a positive budget in which there hasn't been cuts, especially to the schools. And when I read this, I immediately called the mayor and congratulated her because it has been way too long for all of us on the council, having, and me on the Finance Committee, to have to listen to the dread of layoffs and cuts. And to have a positive message is wonderful, and I'm thrilled. Thank you, Mayor Kadrig. As I go on, I wanted to review the dates for our budget hearings. On May 17th at 5:00 p.m. in Room 1, School Human Services Debt and Interest. May 24th at 5:00 p.m., Public Works Enterprise Culture and Recreation. And May 25th at 5:00 p.m., Public Safety, General Government, Employee Benefits. We will go over the budget line by line. If you want a hard copy of the budget, I don't know if the mayor's already asked you this, but if you would send a note to her, she will have, happy to have one printed up. Otherwise, we should be at our meetings with our laptops. Okay. The Finance Committee.
Don't forget to refer the budget to your committee.
I would like to make a motion to refer the budget that the mayor submitted to the Finance Committee for review.
Second. We have a motion in a second to send the mayor's budget to the Finance Subcommittee. We have any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions or names? Motion passes.
Thank you. We met last week, the Finance Committee, and reviewed stipends for elected officials, boards, and committees. The committee made an initial recommendation, which I'm not going to bring forward for our council review, I just wanted you to hear it. At that meeting, besides the three Finance Minutes members was Counselor Kuzinski and Counselor McCoy, President McCoy. We voted not to increase stipends for our boards. We voted not to increase the stipend for the mayor because the mayor was increased at the last election cycle. But we did vote three to zero, an initial recommendation to increase the council's stipend for the fiscal year 2018, $1,000, and for the School Board, $500. This is a minimal amount, and personally, this counselor, as I stated that night, would not have recommended these if we'd had not gotten the fabulous budget message from the mayor. And I'm hopeful in two years, when this actually comes about, that it will not hurt the budget. The budget will increase in these two areas by $12,000. Now, I'm presenting that for you to listen, and I will make a motion for a final vote for the council at the next meeting. I just wanted you to hear it and understand where we're at. Finally, I'd like to make-
I think that has to be an ordinance. There's an ordinance about that.
Right. I'm going to make the motions under ordinances. I saw the ones you-
Okay.
I'd like to, at this time, with your permission under new business, Mr. President, make a first reading.
Sure.
A supplemental appropriation request of hereby requested for $200,000 to be appropriated from free cash, to be appropriated to general stabilization, $100,000, and capital stabilization, $100,000, for a total of $200,000. The requested amounts will be used for the following purpose, to transfer funds into general and capital stabilization. Second supplemental appropriation request is the amount of $70,000 to be appropriated from free cash, to be appropriated to snow and ice deficit, $70,000, for the following purpose, to provide funds for the FY '16 snow and ice deficit. And finally, $3,000 is requested from free cash, to be appropriated to Building Services and Personnel Services, $3,000, for the following purposes, to provide funds for personnel services in the Building Department.
Second.
Second. I didn't make a motion. I moved that those three items be sent to Finance Committee for review. Second.
Okay. We have a motion in a second for request for $200,000 from, to go to general stabilization and capital stabilization, $70,000 to go to snow and ice deficit, and $3,000 to go to Building Inspector Personnel Services. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions or names? Okay. Motion passes.
And I believe that concludes my Finance Committee report.
Thank you, Counselor.
We will have another meeting next week to review those items. And lastly, I forgot, I would like a motion that the three items hereby mentioned that were sent to Finance Committee be set for public hearing at our next full council meeting on May 18th. Second.
We have a motion in a second to send the three aforementioned appropriations for a public hearing on May 18th. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Okay. Motion passes.
Thank you. That does conclude.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor. Public Safety. In the absence of Counselor Hayes, Counselor Carey, would you like to-
Sure. Hi. We met last week just to go over the mission statement, which we came up with a draft and should have been submitted via email to the Rules and Government Relations Subcommittee. Everything else is ongoing, and we, our next meeting is still to be scheduled, but should be soon.
Thank you. Appointments, Counselor Smith.
Thank you. We met earlier tonight to discuss two mayoral appointments. I'd like to bring them up for consideration at the full city council tonight. First one is Martha Smith, who is an applicant for the Board of Assessors with a term expiration of 12/31/17. Should I do my discussion about her as a candidate now or after the motion?
Whenever.
Okay. Martha Smith has had her assessor's license, let me just make sure I'm saying the right license, excuse me for a second. Okay, she's had her residential real estate appraiser's license and her own business doing real estate appraisal since 1992, and she has her real estate appraisal business within East Hampton. And she also works as a Realtor within the Valley at Ralphie Real Estate. So, she brings a breadth of experience within the Valley to this position and was recommended to the position by Peter Davies, who is currently on the Board of Assessors. So, wanted to bring her forth and make a motion to accept Martha Smith in the Department of Board of Assessors for a term expiration of 12/31/17.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion in a second for Martha Smith for the Board of Assessors. Any further discussion?
I just want to compliment Ms. Smith for coming to our aid to serve on our board. She seems very highly qualified and thrilled because the Board of Assessors is a very important board.
Counselor Winnie?
I made the same comments. I also made the same comment that Juliana Bousa, coming to us with her doctorates in ecology and planning and all of that, to be on our Conservation Commission. Both of these appointments are just fantastic. And for when people carry over from their professional life into volunteering on our boards, it just adds that amount of professionalism and knowledge that a lot of our boards don't necessarily get, so.
Any other discussion? I would, I would add that I think that, you know, having residents that have the depth and breadth of knowledge that applies to the issues of the city and having to volunteer is a great resource to us. Again, that's wonderful. Bearing no other comments, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any abstentions or, all right, motion passes. And since it is 6:15, oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, go ahead, finish that.
The second mayoral appointment is Juliana Bousa for the Conservation Commission with a term expiration of 12/31/18. And Juliana Bousa has her PhD in Evolution Ecology and Organismal Biology, and she currently is Program Coordinator for Mount Holyoke College and brings a lot of professional experience into that position as well.
Yeah.
So, I'd like to make a motion to accept Juliana Bousa for the Conservation Commission with a term expiration of 12/31/18.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion in a second for Juliana Bousa for the Conservation Commission. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions or against? Okay. Motion passes. Does that conclude?
That concludes.
Okay.
I make a motion that we open the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to open up the public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Public hearing's open, and Counselor Rist, looks like we're going to start with you tonight.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. First interdepartmental transfer is not requested at $5,510. This was needed for the, let me finish the second reading. To be transferred from the Reserve Fund, to be transferred to City Auditor Assistant Salary, $5,510. Requested to provide funds for retirement payout. This was straightforward. There was a retirement due accumulated vacation time. It's not sick time. I'll let the mayor come forward to give you any other clarification, but I think it is straightforward, and the Finance Committee voted three to zero to approve it.
So, this is actually, to me, a very efficient process. We have our assistant city auditor that, after many, many years of fantastic service to our city, was able to retire. Now, she technically will come off our city books as of May 9th, and our new employee will go on the city books as of May 10th. So, that is, to me, a very smooth transition in time. And what this is, is this is just the payout for a time she would have accrued for her vacation.
Good. Okay. Any comments from the counselors? Any comments from the public? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
I move that the city council approve an interdepartmental transfer of $5,510 from the Reserve Fund to the City Auditor Assistant Salary Account.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion in a second to, the amount requested, $5,510 to be transferred from the Reserve Fund, $5,510, to be transferred to the City Auditor Assistant Salary, $5,510. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions or against? Motion passes. Okay. Thank you.
The next interdepartmental transfer is requested is $32,000 to be transferred from the Reserve Fund to the account Streetlights Energy for Light and Heat, $20,000, and Streetlights Professional and Technical Service, $12,000, to provide funds for increased cost electricity and repair of streetlights. This is under the mayor's department, and I'll let her explain, but apparently, we have some streetlights to repair. Also, we have to pay our utility bill.
That's, that's exactly correct. So, the first line where you see the 521 for the energy and light, that's exactly what you're talking about. That's exactly for our ever-source, our electric bill itself. And this is one of the, through the solar program, our credits are dispersed through many of our electric bills. This one has a very small percentage. So, there was an increase, a very large increase, that I'm sure all of you have noticed even, you know, residentially, over the last year. So, the prior year, it used to be six cents kilowatt, and it certainly is not six cents anymore. But we have successfully locked in with the supplier, so now we know exactly what to, you know, expect for our utilities. So, we locked in quite a while ago, maybe last October, but this is the increase in utility costs themselves. The next line is professional services. We contract out to have our streetlights fixed, and you'll notice in the developments, you'll see where sometimes the poles just rot, fall down, and we call in the contractors to, you know, put up new poles, so it's for purchases of service, purchases of materials like that, and also the technical part. So, we add new poles and also the lights, paying the contractors to fix the light, whether your light is completely off, completely on during the day, or blinking. So, that's exactly what those two categories are, and it's just the shortages are for that specific purpose.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any comments from the counselors? Anyone from the public? Seeing none? Entertained motion.
Finance Committee approved this transfer three to zero. I make a motion that the city council approve an interdepartmental transfer of $32,000 from the Reserve Fund to the Streetlights and Energy Light and Heat Account, $20,000, and to the Streetlights Professional Technical Services of $12,000 for $32,000. Second.
Okay. We have a motion in a second for request for $32,000 from the, $20,000 from Streets and Lights Energy for Light and Heat, $12,000 for Streetlights Professional and Technical Services, it's for $32,000. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions or against? Motion passes.
The next interdepartmental transfer, I'll do a second reading. It's requested, the amount requested is $65,000 to be transferred from the Reserve Fund, to be transferred to the Veterans Cash Benefits Account for $65,000, to provide funds for increased demands from veterans' assistance. The veterans' agent has requested this amount because of increased demand on services we provide to our veterans in our city. Two things to make note, 75% of this funding and all the budget is reimbursed by the state, which is a good thing. And this, although our agent serves more than one community, these funds are specific to East Hampton's veterans.
Very good.
Mayor Kadrig, do you want to add anything?
And again, that's absolutely correct. These are to service the veterans in East Hampton only. As you know, we have a Veterans Council that we share our veterans' agent with. We have him Monday through Thursday in the afternoon. South Hadley has him Monday through Thursday in the morning, and Granby has him on Friday. And these are benefits that are, without a doubt, do the, do the veterans, and they have, they have increased over the years. He also had to go for a transfer to, to South Hadley through town meeting because theirs have increased. And you can imagine why they would. You know, this can go to housing, it can go for medical, it can go for burial, so dental. So, these are benefits specifically and only for veterans, and, you know, just knowing the way of the times, you can see how, you know, times are a little difficult and the increased need is what it is. And it's not always an increase in people. It's, could depend on what the medical requirements are for the benefits. And again, duly noted that these benefits themselves are, when John processes these, there, you know, he makes sure that he processes them according to state regulations, whereas he's already assured that 75% of this money is returned right to the city, by the state.
Yeah, just one question. The state won't return this to us until, when? Isn't there some kind of glitch or something that-
No, no, no. They're, the turnaround is pretty good. They return it on a regular basis. But it goes, it doesn't go into a revolving fund for John, it goes right into the general fund.
Right. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any questions from the counselors? Any input from the public? Seeing none? Entertained motion.
I move that the council approve an interdepartmental transfer of $65,000 from the Reserve Fund to the Veterans Cash Benefits Account for a total of $65,000. Second.
I have a motion in a second for a transfer from the Reserve Fund of $65,000 to Veterans' Cash Benefits for $65,000, to provide funds for increased demand for veterans' assistance. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions or against? Seeing none? Passes.
Interdepartmental transfer, I'll do a second reading. Amount requested is $9,500 to be transferred from the Reserve Fund, to be transferred to the Fire Department Vehicle Equipment Repair Account, $4,000. The Ambulance Vehicle Equipment Repair Account, $2,500. And the Ambulance Miscellaneous Professional Services Account, $3,000, for a total of $9,500, for the following purpose, to provide funds for vehicle equipment repairs in fire and ambulance and departments and a shortage in ambulance billing costs. The city's fire department does not have a huge maintenance line, and as such, they usually come to us at this time of year to make up the funds for repairs. The request for additional billing professional services is a good thing. It means we're collecting more funds from ambulance. I guess the bad thing is that means we're making more service calls, but that is a good thing. Does the mayor want to add anything to that?
If you have any questions, but-
Any questions from the counselors?
No.
Any questions from the public? Seeing none, entertain a motion.
This was passed by the Finance Committee three to zero, so I'll make a motion to council approve an interdepartmental transfer of $9,500 from the Reserve Fund to the Fire Department Vehicle Equipment Repair, $4,000, Ambulance Vehicle Equipment Repair, $2,500, and Ambulance Miscellaneous Professional Services of $3,000, for a total of $9,500.
Second.
A motion in a second to transfer $9,500 from the Reserve Fund to Fire Department Vehicle Equipment Repair, $4,000, Ambulance Vehicle Equipment Repair, $2,500, Ambulance Miscellaneous Professional Services, $3,000, for a total of $9,500. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions or against? Motion passes.
Last thing on my docket is supplemental appropriation request. It's, the request is for $3,300 to be appropriated from free cash, to be appropriated to the Fire Department Capital Fire Ground Rehab Trailer Account. It's a capital account, $3,300, to provide funds for the purchase of a fire ground rehab trailer. This is a trailer that's been housed here, as the memo from the chief has said, from Hampshire County. It's in good shape, and they've decided to buy it. They're only seeking $3,300 and a grant match. And as he says, all of its equipment are worth over $20,000. Perhaps the mayor can enlighten us. I forget exactly what we use this trailer for, but I know the fire department uses-
Sure. That was one of the really good questions that came up at the Finance Subcommittee. What he uses it for is actually more like a protection. So, the trailer goes to say it's a fire and freezing cold, winter, ice.
Oh, right.
Keep the people, you know, for warming purposes, or to, you know, rest, water, sustenance, that type of thing. And so, the chief thought it was a win-win to pick up something worth $20,000 for $3,300, seeing how we, we use it all the time, and we've had it here all the time. We've been extremely lucky to have it here and house it here. Now, we won't have to share it.
Oh, that was one of my questions.
Unless it's mutual.
Any questions from the counselors? Any questions from the public? Go ahead.
Mayor? Mayor? If I may ask, you mentioned that there were some warming capacities to the trailer, and then in the wintertime, is there also air conditioning during the summertime?
Yes. That's exactly what they use it for, for any extreme situations, and obviously, when you're, you know, firefighting fires, how extreme heat, for cooling and for warming, for exactly that. Exactly what you would think of.
Yep. Just didn't know if we had another request coming.
Yep.
Because we certainly wouldn't want to, we would want to see the firefighters protected. Very important piece of-
We, we use it a lot.
Yeah. Very important.
Just to continue to use it for exactly what we do.
Is this a mobile trailer that they'll take on scene? So, if the-
You see it over there when you drive by and/or at all the open houses and keep going around it.
Okay. Because the reason I was asking is, I know, I know in New York, after 9/11, these types of trailers are really important for families to go to, and I was just imagining having, if a catastrophic fire happened in East Hampton, I think that kind of trailer can serve as a privacy place for people who are, who are watching their place burn down. And, I mean, it's, it really provides a very different type of importance.
Protection in a lot of different ways.
Right. So, I just wanted to point that out.
Does that have communication capabilities inside of it, so?
Well, they would have all their communications abilities with them.
All right. So, it's just a-
I'm not exactly sure exactly what's on the inside of it, but-
Oh, you're not sure what's in it?
Yeah. It's, they would, you know, obviously, the departments, the police and department, police and fire would have all their communications with them anyway, but it's really made for exposure purposes.
Okay. All right.
Okay. So, any input from the public? Seeing none, entertain a motion.
I move that the city council approve a supplemental appropriation request of $3,300 to be appropriated from free cash, to be appropriated to Fire Department Capital Fire Ground Rehab Trailer, the amount of $3,300.
We have a motion in a second for supplemental appropriation from free cash, $3,300, to be appropriated to Fire Department Capital Fire Ground Rehab Trailer for the purposes of purchasing a fire ground rehab trailer. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions or against? Motion passes. And it looks like this, and this one is for me.
Oh, boy.
So, we did have a request from property owner at 130 Cottage Street to rezone that particular parcel. This was an issue that came up when we were redoing the zoning map. It was identified as an area that was out of compliance, I guess. It didn't make sense for it to be zoned, R-10, I believe it is, yeah. And I don't think it had ever been used as R-10. So, it had always been used as a downtown business type of zoning. So, this was relatively easy for the ordinance Subcommittee as we looked at it, and I believe for the planning board, it was, it was relatively easy for them as well, because what we looked at was, how does this parcel fit into the existing zoning and what makes sense? And for, as we looked at this, we realized it made sense for it to be in downtown business. So, that being said, I would, Jessica is here, so if you want to speak.
Yeah, just a couple of points. This is a property that's right on the border between downtown business and R-10, so it's, it's natural to sort of flip it from one zone to another. It's not creating a spot zoning situation, so I think that's important to note. Also, this is, this is a gateway area to our downtown, to our cultural district. It's a property that has been, um, needing to be purchased and revitalized, um, to, as part of that gateway to our downtown. So I think it's really important that, um, you know, there's a, there's a real estate deal on the line here. It's kind of contingent on this, on the zoning change. Um, I've had a lot of businesses and a lot of property owners, um, contact me about it and have walked away from the deal because it's zoned R-10, and weren't willing to go through the zoning process to, um, to make it happen as a downtown business. So, um, to me, it's, it's, it's kind of a no-brainer. It's natural. Um, it fits right into our existing zoning, and so I hope you consider approving it tonight.
Thank you. And we can also open it up, I believe, uh, the seller's representative here, as well as the buyer and buyer's representatives, if you, if you guys would like to come up and, and say anything about this, you're welcome to.
Sure. I'll open in a second.
And if you could, please just state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Uh, my name is Jamie Fallon. I'm with, uh, Goggins Real Estate. I am representing, this is Libby Canazi, uh, in the real estate transaction. I actually live in Holyoke. I live at 12 Princeton Street in Holyoke. Um, however, I grew up here in East Hampton. So one thing that, uh, Jessica had also mentioned when we had the, uh, subcommittee meeting is that this had never been, uh, functional as a residence, because there are no kitchens, there are no full bathrooms. Uh, it has always been used as office space and/or, um, you know, recreational use. I believe there was also a convenience store or something along those lines in there at one point in time. We are looking to, hopefully, um, as Jessica put, you know, be able to create a nice, uh, pleasant aesthetic building when, as you're coming into the downtown, as it is one of the few cultural districts, um, in, in the country, as far as, as far as I know. So, um, you know, we're hoping that this goes through, and we're hoping that, uh, you know, the real estate transaction, Bill Seppler, who is here, is, uh, looking to purchase it and be able to make it a little bit more identifiable and, uh, bring it back to life. So, you know, with your, uh, with your consideration, you know, I'm hoping that we can move forward.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the public like to say anything?
Hello, everyone. Chuck Connor from Taylor Real Estate, 314 Main Street in East Hampton. And all I want to add to that is, uh, the purchase here, Jamie and I have been working cooperatively on this transaction, and, uh, the new owner, Bill Stepler, is intending to own or occupy it for his own business and lease out to other businesses and just continue the business use that's always been there.
Thank you. So I did want to, um, just say, this came out of the ordinance subcommittee, uh, with the three, three to zero approval. Uh, and it also had unanimous approval from the planning board. So I guess at this point, uh, I would like to make a most, a motion, uh, to amend the zoning of 130 Cottage Street to change it from R-10 to downtown business.
I'd second that.
Okay. We have a motion in the second. Any further discussion? Counselor winning.
When this first came to her, I, I had no idea that, that that building was R-10, downtown business. I always thought it was all downtown business. And being the representative for Precinct 3, which that building is in, uh, it absolutely makes sense that we make it downtown business and cohesive to the full use of the building. I just hope that our, our person who came forth with this, uh, didn't find it cumbersome or anything else, like Jamie had said, you know, other buyers didn't want to come in front of the city council for that kind of change. We, we really, we really want to put it out there that we're not, you know, we're not, we're very conducive to change and, and bringing things up to standards in East Hampton, so I'm absolutely for this, so...
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Kuzinski.
I would, I would add to that, that, yeah, I, I think any, any legitimate change that makes sense for the community, any change that can bring businesses to the community, good businesses. Here we have a building that looks like an office building, will be an office building, looks commercial. And it was interesting that back in the seventies, when there was a real, um, movement away from commercial activity downtown, that this space was then rezoned from commercial to, uh, residential in the hopes of keeping it economically viable. We're sensitive to the economic viability of our community, so thank you very much for bringing this to us.
Absolutely. Any other comments? Okay, so we do have a motion in the second on the table. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions or against? Motion passes.
Chair was painless.
Move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion, uh, in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions or against? Motion passes. Okay, back to reports from standing committees. And I believe we ended at ordinance, which keeps it with me. Lucky you guys. Um, so the ordinance, um, subcommittee, uh, has, uh, not met in, since our last meeting. Uh, and I just do want to remind people that we do have, on the 25th of this month, which is a Wednesday, um, we have a meeting, uh, and that meeting, one of the main purposes of that meeting is to discuss the plastic bag ban. So we are going to be inviting people, um, who might be affected by that, from the community, to come and, and talk to us about that. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew that on the 25th, 6:00 PM, I believe, I don't know if, uh, I know what room we're in at this moment, Barbara. Okay, so if, if, it might be one, if not, well, we will be here on the 25th. Yep. And we are also, we're also going to be, um, at that meeting, uh, going to dig a little bit deeper into the food truck ordinance. Uh, I guess our premonition was, has come true, and there has been an influx of food trucks coming to East Hampton. Um, so I guess that, that bodes well for the, our foresight, um, but it does not bode well for the fact that we haven't resolved it yet. So, uh, but we're working on that. Um, so I think that, you know, we will continue to look at that, as well as the other, um, things on our agenda. I don't believe, I do, we do need, um, because since we are still working on signs, I would like to, uh, make a motion to extend, um, the sign ordinance, uh, for inconsistencies. Let's go 90 days on that one, please. Okay, we have a motion in the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions or against? Motion passes. And, um, that brings us to property. Counselor Kuzinski.
Uh, property committee met twice and submitted a, uh, role to the, a role of the property committee to the rules committee, and that's now in the rules committee's hands.
Okay, very good. Rules and government relations. Counselor Riss.
Yes, uh, I did receive the property committee's mission statement, which concludes all of the committees, and I'm thankful for that. I will now put those in the form of a rule change, listing each mission as the role of each committee as a rule. I forget the numbers right now, but I'll submit them to you. I may change the form of some of these to bullet, uh, keeping or, and, uh, in the case of property committee, I might add something, but again, these will all go to committee for review, and all of you can see them and amend as necessary, again. I did want to address Counselor Hayes's request, 'cause I believe I can address her concerns, which seem to me to be more clerical than anything else, and I don't believe there needs to be a rules discussion about them. I ask the councilors to be patient, uh, with our clerk and with everybody with regard to PDFs, because we just started doing that this year, digital transfer of information. But she's, uh, I've asked the clerk, and she's, Barbara assures me that all posted agenda items are complete, or they wouldn't be posted. The agenda acts in a way itself as a table of contents, 'cause, so I personally don't believe it's necessary to be asking the clerk to do more work to add a table of contents, 'cause the agenda itself is in the order that you receive the documents. Barb also will post all new items when, uh, they are given to her, including amended agendas as soon as possible. In other words, if you, if you provide a new item and it's approved by the president, she will post it on the website as soon as possible, and, um, I believe that just means catching up, and I think she will do that. I wanted to remind the councilors of Rule 5D. This has come up a little bit. Rule 5D, D states that agenda items must be, uh, presented five days before the council meeting, and that's at 10:00 AM. In the rules, Barbara's extended that to noon. Also, after that, the president must approve either any new items. So if you have a new item, and this goes for the mayor or anybody, you need to send it to Joe and, and to Barbara, and if it's approved to be placed on the agenda, it will be. But, uh, that has to go to Joe first. And secondly, the clerk, being Barbara, is the only one tasked with distribution to council members of any agenda items to be presented to the full council for review. This is to maintain a certain, um, consistency of information distribution. Barbara is tasked with distributing that to us and to the public, so we'd like to maintain that. So we ask that you not do that on your own. So if you have a new item that you want to be present to the full council for review, let it send to, send it to Barbara first, and to Joe if it's after the timeline. You can present any agenda item for review on your own to Barbara prior to the Thursday deadline. You certainly are allowed to do that, and as, as well as the public and any charter-approved person can do that. The mayor does, okay? So I wanted to go over that. I personally don't feel this needs further review, but I'll, if councilors feel that it needs more discussion, it's certainly entertaining. I, I just don't feel that we need to, 'cause I think Barbara's on top of it.
I just have two comments, one question, I think. So in her request, she made a comment about, at the time that we get the files, that they also be made available to the public. Is that not happening today?
I thought it was.
It is? Oh, okay.
That's why I made it.
I did as well. So I just wanted to make sure. Now, on the, the whole topic of this, though, I do think that Counselor Hayes should be here when we're going to discuss it. I mean, I appreciate the fact that you've gone through that, and I, I just feel like she ought to be here to rebut anything if she wants to.
It'll be in the minutes, and I, I would certainly agree.
You can make an informal motion to pause it.
Then I think we should do that.
Why don't we, uh, continue it? I'll make a motion that the council continue this item to the next meeting.
Under old business. Do we even need to vote on that?
No, well...
Okay. We're not gonna...
So that, that keeps it on, that keeps it on the, on the agenda, because I was gonna raise the same issue if there's a matter and the person's not here. It, I'd be reluctant to dispose of it. So I appreciate that, that move. Thank you very much.
Dan.
Okay, and I...
To clarify the rules.
Thank you, Counselor Riss. Uh, I, I just wanted to back up a little bit. I think we do, under ordinance, um, we do need to move the stipend, uh, increase.
Yep.
I think that was gonna have you do that.
Are they both ordinances? If you want to have a public hearing?
I'm not, I'm not ready to present that to the council.
Oh, I thought you said for the next meeting.
Yes, but I have to write it up as an ordinance.
Okay.
I have to present it.
All right.
And I wanted the Finance Committee to review it again.
Okay.
Okay, so, but at the next meeting, I'll write it up as an ordinance, and I'll make sure it passes your muster.
Fair enough. Uh, and, and Joe did not give me any guidance on the ad hoc naming committee, so I'm just gonna say that there's no report at this time. And I don't believe, I believe we did go through all new business. Don't believe we have any old business, so I guess I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All righty.